Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of February 7th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and is also streamed live on Shrewsbury Meeting Connections website. I'd like to thank Liz Poplowski. She's here with us from SMC, helping with our meeting this evening. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening. If anyone wishes to join us for that portion in the future, please contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. Next is Chairperson of Members' Report. Nothing? Okay, thank you. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Wanted to say thank you to the Mass Beijing Chinese Language School for again hosting the yearly celebration of the Lunar New Year. We had a terrific event at Shrewsbury High School this past Sunday afternoon. It was joined actually by some members from, representatives from the Chinese consulate in New York, who were attending, as well as some local dignitaries, Senator Michael Moore, Representative Hannah Kane, Town Moderator Jim Kane, Chair of the Board of, the Select Board Beth Cassavant. Appreciate them all being there and making some brief remarks. I want to thank in particular Brian Xu, who is the longtime leader of the Mass Beijing Chinese Language School, along with his spouse April Yu, who is our Assistant Director of Business Services, and but is very involved with that program as well. And then essentially student groups representing the different Mandarin Chinese classes from both Shrewsbury High School and St. John's High School. It's been a joint effort along with folks from the Chinese Language School, which operates on weekends. All presented various performances, as did some local adult groups as well, and some martial arts groups. And it was a wonderful presentation. Also want to thank Ken Almira, the Director of World Languages, and Guime Zhang, who is the Mandarin Chinese teacher at Shrewsbury High School for putting on a successful event. So congratulations to them and certainly a happy Lunar New Year coming up to everyone who will be celebrating that. That'll be happening soon. And then secondly, just want to thank all of our educators who participated yesterday, one of our early release days. These are days that monthly during a good chunk of the year, students are released early and educators are responsible for continuing variety of professional development work that they're doing. That's how we can implement our strategic priorities and goals is to make sure that we're providing time for educators to do that learning and that collaborating to advance the programming that we're working on implementing. So I was able to stop by, in particular, the Beal School where our elementary faculty had been working on the next phase of the professional development for the literacy program. It was extremely well received and I know that the teachers are working very hard at this work, as are all of our curriculum leaders and building administrators. So just wanted to mention that and thank them and recognize, of course, that we know it's a challenge for families sometimes to provide that childcare during those early release days, but it's really extremely valuable time for us to improve what's happening in the classroom all the other days. So thank you to everyone who participated in that yesterday and that's Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first time scheduled appointment this evening is a grant. The Shrewsbury Senior High School has been awarded a grant from the 1-8 Foundation for Project Lead the Way, which is a high school engineering program. It is a $40,000 grant and will be distributed over three years to help support the engineering program. The grant will provide $16,000 in 2024, $12,000 in 2025, and $12,000 in 2026. The funds may be utilized to offset the costs associated with the Project Lead the Way engineering program and this may include equipment, technology, and educator training. And we have with us today Mr. Buzidlo and Mr. Rascosi.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
Locks me out, dude. I'm sorry.
Thanks. Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. Good news story. Dave and I have been working pretty hard over the last probably six to 12 months in trying to make connections and reestablish connections with the 1-8 Foundation and our partners at WPI around how do we look for resources to help shore up our career in technical education. We attended a conference at WPI. What month was that?
It was October.
Yeah, October. Did some networking there. Had a great experience as always with Project Lead the Way partners, but also MassSTEM Hub. And just really had a great experience where we, again, reconnected with some people we knew through the 1-8 Foundation who encouraged us to kind of seek out the funding. And I give Dave a lot of credit, probably the majority of the credit for this grant. He took the lead on it. He communicated with our partners and then actually did the writing of the grant. We did a couple of phone calls, myself, Dave, and Dr. Lazat were on a phone call of how we can sharpen up the grant. And some of our business partners, corporate partners, actually helped tighten that up for us. But Mr. Rascosi took the lead and really wrote the grant, showed us a copy of it and said, "Are we good to submit?" I said, "Let's do it." And then we got the good news. So it's a, it's a really good news story and hopefully it will help support the program we're going to potentially add. And some of the money that we can use can be used for professional development, can be used for refreshing materials, and also consumables. So when we think of the type of program we have, I think it's just a great opportunity for us to leverage the work of Dave, but also of the 1-8 Foundation. We, if you recall, a long time ago, I think we initially took a grant from them to get Project Lead the Way off the ground. So they've just been an excellent organization for us to work with and partner with. And we're happy to ask, answer any questions.
Any questions, Lizzie?
I have had a lot of fun trying to explain to my eighth grader what some of these pathways are and what, what some of the different options are. And so, and I will say that in my house, there's actually been a surprising enthusiasm as a parent to receive that. I think, I just need to call out that, Dr. Sawyer, in addition to this, which, you know, we're very excited about, given, given the focus that this committee has had and the whole district has had on career and technical education. But the number of big and small, in this case over three consecutive years, which is, which is certainly great, of important outside grants and gifts, and I'm thinking of Dr. Lazat has been up here a few different times with business communities and individuals and, you know, sort of people in the, in the Shrewsbury community. But all the different ways that the team is sort of stitching together some additional funds is really, you know, it's a lot of time though too. And so I want to thank you for doing it, but it is, it is important to the bottom line. And then we're going to go pivot over to the budget in, in due course and kind of talk, talk through all of that. But I am just so appreciative and in my professional life, I spent some time on seeking grant funding and it is not easy. So I'm glad you have a great partnership and this seemed like, hopefully, some fairly, fairly straightforward, but I'm also sure it was a lot of your time and effort. So just really thank you very, very much to you and the many who keep coming before you at different meetings with, you know, sometimes, sometimes smaller, sometimes bigger, but each one of them really does make quite a substantial difference for us. So thank you.
Thank you again. I think, you know, taking the time out to research and write a grant is again above and beyond your regular job duties and it's really helps our bottom line. Like Ms. Effron said, we're going to be talking about our initial budget for FY '25. And anytime we get grants or any other funding, it just frees up other dollars for other things that we need to do. So thank you very much and for having these pathways because it's giving students these opportunities that we didn't have years ago to really experience something that maybe will send them down a career path and they know that earlier rather than when they're halfway through college or something. So thank you very much. Dr. Sawyer?
I want to thank Mr. Rascosi in particular, as mentioned, for putting this together along with the work that Mr. Buzidlo and Dr. Lazat did for all the reasons stated. We're looking forward to continuing to ramp up these more opportunities for kids for career and technical education. And this will certainly help us do that by being able to support the engineering program. And Project Lead the Way is a nationally known, high-quality program. It's been at Shrewsbury High School for a long time. I think we're re-energizing it and that this is, this will help us do that as well. So again, thank you and certainly recommend that the school committee vote to accept the funds.
Thank you. We have a motion that the committee vote to accept the $40,000 Project Lead the Way High School Engineering Grant from the 1-8 Foundation for Project Lead as presented and use such funds for their intended purpose.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you again. Next on the agenda, we have a, another grant, the Social and Emotional Learning and Mental Health State Grant. Shrewsbury Public Schools has been awarded the Fiscal Year '24 Supporting Students Social, Emotional Learning, Behavioral, and Mental Health and Wellness Through Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports Grant of $22,855 to support the social, emotional, and behavioral health needs of students, families, and educators. We have Ms. Belzito and Dr. Lazat here to talk to us about this one.
Good evening. So first off, I'd like to thank Meg Bartlett, the Assistant Director for Special Education and Pupal Personnel Services, Felicity Barber, our district social worker, along with Jamie Miller, our Director of Counseling and Mental Health Services, who also supported the writing of this grant with Dr. Lazat and I. As you know, we're very committed to the social, emotional, behavioral health needs and this grant of $22,000 will allow for a number of things. I'll speak to two parts and Dr. Lazat will speak to the other two parts. Restorative practices, one part of the grant will allow for some of our clinical, actually all of our clinical department to take a course that practices the honoring the student's background and identity and set a different tone of respect and dignity by restoring agency. It's a system that treats behavior differently and opens dialogue between educators and students, which as we know can truly make a difference. Another part of the grant will allow for coaching through a contracted service with OpenSky for cognitive behavior therapy, which is a type of treatment for our clinical department to use to support students in learning how to identify and change difficult thought patterns and that have a negative influence on their behavior and emotions.
Thanks. Collaborative Problem Solving is out of MGH. Dr. Stuart Oblon is the director of and creator of Collaborative Problem Solving. There are four steps in collaborative problem solving that include identifying the problem, gathering information and research to increase understanding of the behavioral problem, analyzing the problem, generating possible solutions, and then reassessing. So in this set of courses, staff will learn about the proven approach to reduce challenging behavior, teach students the skills they lack, and build relationships with the adults in their lives. The courses are offered both virtually and/or in person. And we learned today that Dr. Oblon will be at the Summer Institute in June as one of our featured speakers, thanks to the efforts of Mrs. Clouter. And Trails to Wellness Curriculum is the fourth resource that we're being provided through this grant. And Trails to Wellness Curriculum offers Tier Two sessions that provides students with skills for managing common mental health concerns, including anxiety and depression. Trails is grounded in cognitive behavior therapy and designed to be delivered by school mental health professionals such as counselors, school psychologists, social workers, et cetera. So we're very pleased and grateful to have these funds, time, opportunity, and resources to provide to our educators so that we can best meet the needs of our students with behavioral challenges and meet the needs of our staff and educators who are working diligently to do the best they can for and by our students.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Thank you very much for the work on obtaining this grant as well. I just had a question. You mentioned that one of the speakers will be at the Summer Institute. Will the other professional development courses be for next year? Or is it something that you're seeking to implement this year?
So we're going to start this year with the learning process around the collaborative problem solving and go from there. So we'll have started, we'll be a few months in by the time the Summer Institute happens and then the work will continue.
Great.
The other resources, the grant only runs until actually this June.
Yeah, we have to spend.
So it's a very short window to spend the, the funding. So we'll work as fast as we can.
I have no doubt you'll be successful in spending the funds. We will, we will always take advantage. I just want to just, again, appreciate the effort it takes to kind of, to achieve these, as I said just a few moments ago, but to have a partnership, you know, with an institute like Mass General Hospital. Like we're, you're reaching out to the best and the brightest, right, in the, in the community. And so it's wonderful to have them here for us and providing professional development for our staff, particularly in an area where we know, we're, we're hearing from staff in lots of different ways that they're, they're struggling with some student behavior. So this couldn't be more timely and appropriate. And so hence why I have no doubt you'll be able to spend the funds because the need is, the need is great here and providing more tools for our staff. I realize we just, we just missed, yesterday was Professional Development Day, but the, you know, there'll be, there'll be more opportunities, I'm sure, for you to figure out how to, how to embed this in this year. So thank you for the time and efforts.
I also want to echo, whatever, thank you for doing this. It goes above and beyond and I think this pairs nicely with last school committee meeting when Dr. Sawyer gave his state of the district. And one of the challenges that the, the district is facing is there's a lot of mental health that we're dealing with. There's a lot of behavioral health. So this is good timing. I'm excited for this to happen and that our clinical staff can get the training. From that, are they, is it going to be like a teach-the-teacher mode where we're teaching the clinical staff and that will then carry down into the schools so that the teachers are then armed with some of the resources that the clinical staff was able to?
Yeah, we actually met this morning and we're talking about that very thing. So for the collaborative problem solving, we were saying it would probably be the best to have administrator, teacher, and clinical department kind of working together to kind of rule this out across the district versus just the clinical or just the teachers.
Yes. We are, we have two leadership teams currently in place. Our SEL leadership team and our social, emotional, behavioral leadership team, both of which are, include a combination of teachers, counselors, mental health professionals in our schools. So we're, we're looking to continue that model with the collaborative problem solving specifically.
I think that was my question too, how this rolls down. You know, so we've got the, the clinical people teaching it. So that's great to know that it will be throughout the teachers and throughout the classrooms for, in, in a short amount of time too.
Yes.
And that's what we're hearing, that, you know, that we're hearing a lot of issues that we really haven't seen to this degree in the past. So it's timely and very much needed. And again, helps that bottom line budget. So that's money that we can use in other ways. So thank you again for writing this grant.
You're welcome.
Dr. Sawyer?
No, appreciate the leadership that was shown to pursue these funds and they're very targeted. I think that that's something that, you know, it's based on. And I, I think, you know, we've talked about how having a strong set of strategic priorities is, you know, helping us to focus on where we're trying to procure resources and go in the direction of providing people with tools. And I think whether that's staff on the front lines, including our paraprofessionals, our teachers, we want to make sure we're supporting them. I think this grant provides a variety of trainings that will help our clinical staff certainly be, you know, as effective as they possibly can be when, when they're the ones who need to be addressing issues with kids, as well as some of this, the collaborative problem solving is very intriguing. And I know that a couple of folks, I want to actually thank Gina Kelly, the Assistant Principal at Floral Street School. She did a bit of coursework with it this past summer and on her own wanted to explore it more. I know she's, has some very positive responses to what she's learned. And so I think being able to bring that to more people in the district and then eventually, once we're getting a handle on how we can, you know, spread that tool set to more people will be, will definitely be helpful. So again, appreciate the extra effort that was done to procure the funds and looking forward to hearing how these pieces are implemented. And again, recommend that the school committee vote to accept the grant.
Thank you. We have a motion that the committee vote to accept the Supporting Students Social, Emotional Learning, Behavioral, and Mental Health and Wellness Through Multi-Tiered Systems of Support Grant as presented and use such funds for their intended purpose.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we are going to hear the Shrewsbury High School Improvement Plan. Each Massachusetts public school must have a school council consisting of faculty, parents, and a community member who advise the principal on the development of a school improvement plan. This year, each school council has used the District's 23 through 27 Strategic Plan and the District's 23 through 24 Strategic Goals and Action Steps to determine which goals were most important to be emphasized and develop school-specific goals aligned with a district goal. And tonight we have Mr. Buzidlo, the High School Principal, along with two of the students. If you'd like to introduce yourselves for those watching.
Sure. I'm Rudy Galati and I'm a senior at Shrewsbury High School.
And my name is Mariana Gompis. I'm a junior.
Welcome.
So thanks for having us tonight. I think the strategic priorities and development that the committee put forth really helped focus our conversations at the high school around things that we're actually doing currently and looking for the long-term, some long-term success, but looking at that long window of immediate goals, what we can do right now, and then looking five years out. So we've had some spirited conversation discourse at our early morning meetings. But I will turn it over. Both Mariana and Rudy will help, help us, lead us through this presentation. And they were, like I said, helpful in helping us understand some of the complexities and challenges and issues that are facing high school students as it relates to some of our priorities. So I'll turn it over to, I think, Mariana.
We have three parents, three teachers, and two students on the school council, all of who have contributed to improving the school.
So throughout the past couple of months, our members of the school council worked together to come up with the school improvement plan, which incorporated our strategic priorities. We met almost every other week before school and usually we'd become with, begin with Mr. Buzidlo's principals update, which included like current events or like athletic updates or anything that's going around, going around in school that would kind of bring us to the same page. And then we would delve deeper to discuss our strategic priorities. So the areas of focus that we came up with was educational excellence, which has four priorities, well-being, which has one priority, and then optimization of resources, which also has one priority.
As Rudy said, we looked at these priorities and focused on educational excellence and discussed four priorities. Priority one, high-quality teaching and classroom instruction. Priority two, safe and inclusive environments to increase opportunities for advanced coursework. Priority three, advanced career and technical education to develop career pathways and enhance career exploration. Priority four, develop a district-wide data culture. And we also looked at more steps too.
I'm sorry. So under, under educational excellence, priority one, we really looked at this goal focusing on professional development to improve classroom instruction. That's the overall district goal. We broke it down to what we're actually doing at the high school this year in conjunction with Mrs. Clouter in her office around curriculum instruction assessment. We've partnered with the New Teacher Project. And as you'll see from the slide, we've met with a consultant for the New Teacher Project, really focusing on classroom instruction in grades nine in the social sciences. So we look at world civ, world civ instruction with those teachers and also grade nine English instruction. So what we've done is we scheduled, we met with a consultant, we developed some protocols for classroom observations. We conducted observations in all grade nine classrooms in the history and English departments. And then we really looked at the data that we found from our observation, observations using a protocol tool. We took that tool, we normalized some of the data, had conversations with what we saw. And then we looked at, trying to plan out this PDSA cycle, which is a plan-do-study-act cycle. So we identified a couple area, core area of focus for improvement. And we really look, are looking to develop a plan to address high-quality task and questions in the classrooms. We found students have really good, there's really good culture and community climates in classrooms. Students have access to high-quality educational texts and materials. So we really focused on the next level, which is that high-quality question and tasks. And also talking about student ownership. How do we have students engage more in conversations and own their learning versus someone just talking about what's happening in a particular subject? So we conducted some department meetings in November in both the history or social science and English departments. And we're also working on to create some collaborative structures within our schedule to allow for teacher, small teacher teams to work on the protocol and how they improve their own high quality, high-quality task and questions within class. We'll go through another data cycle, make more adjustments, make some recommendations with the hope of improving student learning and engagement. So it's a pretty, yeah, so it's a pretty intensive, and we meet, and we're also doing some cross-collaboration with the Walton Public Schools in terms of what they're doing. They're in the same kind of, using the same consultant, but talking with both their administration and their humanities directors around things that are happening in their school and how it relates to this cycle of, and the protocol observations we use here at Shrewsbury.
All right. Our next goal was to increase opportunities for Shrewsbury High School students to take advanced coursework in the next year in order to meet all our state accountability system improvement targets in this area, both for all students and for state-designated student demographic groups. And so we basically reviewed state accountability data and discussed what we saw, which led us to brainstorm ways to allow more students to participate in advanced courses. So we talked about honors and AP coursework from, from the parent, student, teacher, and the guidance counselor perspectives and came to the conclusion that we need to motivate the students to try harder and, to try like harder classes, but also ensure that they aren't exhausting themselves with too many APs. For example, our seniors do have to balance between their college applications as well as their classwork so that we need the correct balance. Teachers actually believed that, and that the opposite problem was happening, where very often students had too many APs and that caused an overload. The parent's perspective was that they were really happy with the new process where the parents have to sign off in power school before a student is actually taking that course in the, during the next year. And then also ensuring that during the one-on-one conversations with the counselor, they're addressing the recommendation that has been made by the teacher and why they're choosing to go with that or go towards a different pathway.
Yeah, and some of the things that we did is, as a school administration leadership team, was we met with Dr. Sawyer and Mrs. Clouter to help frame the issue and develop an approach on how we're going to share this with the staff. How do we push students into higher-level classes, whether it's an honors class or whether it's an AP class? So we shared the state accountability data with our high school leadership team, which is the directors and assistant principals. We met to create a presentation for staff that was going to allow deeper conversations about course placement and really checking potentially some of the bias that we may have around our own understanding of students' potential. So we had also an opportunity where staff was provided time to kind of share some of the supports that the potential supports they might need to advocate for increased students and to advance student learning. When we looked at subgroup data with the leadership team, we didn't necessarily share that with the whole faculty per se, but we definitely framed the issue around how do we try and move traditionally marginalized students into higher-level coursework and the higher-level course load and how we support those students when doing that. So we actually worked on a workshop recently with the, with the entire leadership team. And then we worked on it through our, we started the conversation at a faculty meeting. I think it was this past month. And recently, we had a larger conversation in individual departments around how we try and send messages to students that we, we believe them in, we believe in them, we believe they can do the hard work and we're going to support them no matter what. And so part of that is really looking at student achievement. And then as we enter the course selection process, making recommendations and really trying to push students who might be reluctant to take advanced coursework, to give them the extra kind of push to say, "You can do it. We believe in you. We think you can do it." And there's supports in place. So we also talked about adjusting the course selection timeline to help ensure that the school counseling department would do their overview of course selection and then teacher recommendations came second. This is a super intensive process. We've, teachers have one-on-one conversations with students now around what their recommendations will be. So we're up against the February break around trying to get in school counseling presentations and then the one-on-one meetings. And I think, I have to look at the calendar, but I think next Friday is like the final school counselor presentation. So of course, teacher recommendations will start somewhere around end of next week. They'll be placed in power school. So there could be opportunities for parents to look at that over vacation week. So we've adjusted timeline a little bit there. We're also looking, typically we do this, but we're also looking, we'll have our incoming eighth-grade family night, which is next week. So we sent out communications to Oak Middle School to have eighth-grade families come out to meet with our directors around the course selection process, what that looks like, kind of get acclimated to the high school. And then we have advanced placement tonight, at the high school, where Mrs. Flynn and Mrs. Monopoly are conducting a small workshop, a 20, 25-minute workshop around what advanced placement is. And then individual advanced placement teachers are at the school to answer individual parent or student questions after that meeting. And then we also have our counselor connection program, which will occur on Friday. Friday mornings typically where they'll actually review the course selection process for families who might need additional assistance around or questions they may have just to hear it again if they were unfamiliar with it. So there's a lot of work happening. We hope that we can continue to advance, particularly when we look at traditionally marginalized subgroups to get them in more advanced coursework. It's not an easy concept to grasp for people, but I think we're in the right, we're starting in the right steps and creating a framework for people to put in the right space to have those conversations with students. So we'll look forward, I look forward to seeing what the outcome will be with the course tallies, course selection, what that looks like, and also what it'll look like next year once we take a review of the data.
And we also discussed how students in Shrewsbury High School couldn't attend Asabet Valley Vocational Technical High School. So we need to develop more career and technical courses and experiences for students. This led to a conversation about Project Lead the Way courses and how we're offering new courses to students like medical interventions and engineering, computers, integrated manufacturing. We also discussed setting students to the Blackstone Valley Hub for some hands-on technical experiences to introduce them to manufacturing and allied topics using an experiential approach at the facility. A total of 24 students will have participated in programming at the hub by the end of this school year. The students participate in small groups of eight students and visit the hub for two sessions from 8:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Just last week, a group of students built a set of Bluetooth speakers. And Mr. Buzidlo also updated our group on our progress with applying for the Innovation Career Pathways Grant to help financially support programming for students. to help financially support programming for students, student programming.
So we're in the midst of deadlines tomorrow. We're in the midst of, the grant's pretty, I think I submitted to Dr. Soria this afternoon. I gave him a folder, all the materials. We're, we're wrapped up the writing of the grant. Dr. Soria, Mrs. Flynn, our director of school counseling, Mr. Rascosi and I have collaborated on writing another grant for Innovation Career Pathways. We, as you remember, we awarded a twenty-five thousand dollar grant at the beginning of the school year. We were another, awarded another five thousand dollar grant to help work on developing this program called MYCAP, which is My Career and Academic Planning, where counselors actually sit down, and it's in this, it's in our slide deck a little bit later on, but where they sit down with students and actually develop a, a plan. And they track that plan from freshman year all the way to senior year. So, we've sent a team of people out to be trained in that. We've sent counselors who have come back and we're using a train-the-trainer model. We've also sent Megan DeLeon, who's our Director of Special Education, and also Mrs. Liza Trombley, who's our Director of English, to that MYCAP training. So they're back and they're working on providing that training to our school counseling staff and trying to implement that as we move forward. And that's also part of this Innovation Pathways Grant. But part of the innovation planning, Innovation Pathways Planning Grant was implementing and selecting a curriculum design team of what the program may look like. So we have a cross-section of educators that are serving on this design team that meet, helps serve it as an advisory role for us. Dr. Lozot continues to help and assist with Mr. Cohane around cultivating business partners for internships. I think we've got a lot of success with that this year. And kudos to both them for helping me out with that, because that's, there's not a lot of bandwidth there for me. But they've been excellent in making connections and us actually meeting with people, which has been fantastic. And then we also have a, we have an advisory board for Innovation Career Pathways, which has community members, students, staff, and the parents involved in it to help oversee the implementation of Innovation Career Pathway programming. Regardless if we get the grant, we're going to move forward with the program, pathway programming. So we want someone to help oversee us and help shape that as we, as we progress through the years.
Next, we focused on expanding opportunities for career exploration that would allow the students to have an understanding of what they wanted to do in the future. So for example, yesterday we held our second annual career fair in the SHS Commons. Career fairs usually happen twice a year during the winter and the spring, where students have the opportunity to interact with over thirty diverse organizations, as well as SHS alumni, to learn about the different career paths and ask questions. Also this past November, we had the job fair in the Commons where different businesses advertise about opportunities that they have available. Usually at the job fairs, they have like handouts or business cards that they have so that people can reach out later to contact them. This is great for our students who are very anxious to apply for jobs at, for example, Jersey Mike's, Key Ward, Sam and Health and Retirement Facilities, Parks and Recreation, Goldfish Sun Schools, National Guard, CSI, Crest Technologies, DCR, Continental Pools, and the YMCA. Finally, we also have a program called the Lunch and Learn Program, where it's an opportunity for students to have a casual, casual and interactive environment where students can gain insights into various career paths, ask questions, and connect with professionals from different fields. In the past, we've had speakers who work in local government, authors, musicians, criminal defense attorneys, and people from neuroscience backgrounds. So far, we, we've had a hundred forty-four students registered and meet with the guest speakers, with a few, few students attending more than once. And then, we've had twelve guest speakers, so on average, it's around like eight to twelve students per session, which allows for that small group feeling where they can really ask their questions and interact with the speaker. Then we have around ten more guest speakers registered for February through April, upcoming, for the upcoming year.
A great program. I mean, yes, say we have the job fair, there's so many alumni that either work in town in some organization, they're connected, they've come back. It's just great seeing them. It was just really, it was a really neat yesterday for our career fair. But the Lunch and Learn has been really successful, and again, a tribute to Ms. Cohane, Ms. Cohane and Dr. Lozot for helping coordinate that. And again, a number of alumni come back and want to share their experiences. We've had people who graduated twenty, thirty years ago to people who've graduated within the last, you know, six or seven years and gone off and even changed careers, gone from medical, biomedical engineering to like real estate. I mean, the stories are just absolutely fantastic and some of the connections that our students have made with those people is really tangible. Students are excited and the alumni and people who come and speak are excited because they can share with their expertise around it. So that's had a been a really, had a lot of positive energy around the Lunch and Learn program. We hope, if parents are listening tonight, we hope that you encourage, push, push your students to sign up, excuse me, for Lunch and Learn, because it is a great opportunity to practice interacting with an adult besides your parents or someone in your family, like practicing those communication skills, like listening, speaking, asking questions. Just a great, low-risk, great opportunity for just interact with people that are in our community that can ultimately help students, help shape what they want to do potentially on a career path. We already talked about this, Riddy. The last bullet here is the MYCAP, which I talked about earlier. Implement the My Career and Academic Plan for All Students. That will be happening in school counseling. We've already gone through the training. And that's also embedded in the course selection process.
We discussed student attendance with multiple views and the use of technology in class to make up, make, make up work easier. Teachers being more flexible with deadlines and teachers being very accommodating with students who are out, idea of procrastination. We also discussed how the community is diligent with COVID testing. So there are more students out sick with different illnesses beside COVID, like the flu, colds, et cetera. Additionally, some students take their regular days for doctor's appointments and seeing there are so many students, since seeing there are so many days, some students will use some days to not go to school. So we discussed several ideas on how to lower the attendance. We can continue sending notification letters warning students that they might lose credit, but also discuss sending phone messages to parents. We could require students to make up time missed when they exceed the number of absences in the attendance policy. We discussed having home visits for students who are chronically absent. And possibly changing the number of students under the attendance policy to something lower than nine, maybe seven per semester. And lastly, we had teachers put in Deerwood Commons in power school to show students the impact of missing school, since this will cause their grade to essentially plummet, which will motivate them to go to class.
Yeah, interesting perspective the student shared about this procrastination piece, like some people might not be prepared. My analogy of both Riddy and Ariana's example from their friends was students use the nine days per semester as like PTO. Eight-time off, where they might say, and I think Ms. Boucher was in this conversation in one of our school council meetings. It's, I'm not feeling like, I'm not prepared for school, I'm not prepared for a test, I have a day. I need to take a day, I need another day to kind of make sure I'm ready for school. Grades are really important, I take a day. There's half-days where students might say, an example that was shared to me from the students was, there's a half-day, I have, I have art and I have a PE course and the other two classes, I can make up my work pretty easily because everything's in power, uh, Schoology. So I'm going to try and catch up on sleep and do some, sleep in late and catch up on work when I wake up and take a kind of my, my own mental health day. So there is, you know, when you look at the attendance stuff on the state profile, that, we certainly have work to do around the attendance piece. Both with students who miss more than ten days of school, I think it's upwards of fifty-six percent of our student body misses more than ten days of school last year, and chronically absent students were about twenty percent, which is basically ten percent of the school year. We talked about the challenges with that. So we're looking at ways that we can potentially impact. So, again, if you're in the audience, there's nothing that's going to replace instructional time within the classroom. Like, we understand that there's technology that can help support that when people are out, and we certainly don't want students in school when they're sick, hundred percent not. We have to try and build that resiliency when things aren't going necessarily perfectly, that we have to get up, we have to get there, we have to be present, we have to do the things we have to do. And part of the conversation was potentially reducing the number of absences in our attendance policy to better reflect what the outcomes are. And those absences are actually connected to school credit for graduation. So we've done a number of things. I think our policy works pretty well because it mirrors somewhat this idea that the state has too. There's no unexcused or excused absences, there's just a set number of days. With the idea like, if you're not here, you have a set number of days you're not here, and we just move on. So we have to consider that. We had a lot of conversation about that. It was a, it was an interesting perspective from the students. Eye-opening to the principal and some parents, I think, too, on the committee and teachers, but definitely it was helpful for us to hear from them directly.
Yeah, and so with that, we also discussed the well-being of students. So, our priority is to ensure a safe and inclusive environment to improve student self-efficiency, social awareness, and emotional regulation.
So we discussed an overview of the Panorama data and how we feel that it has gotten better after COVID, where our advisory groups have helped bring the student body together. However, we were not sure if the Panorama survey data is accurate or representative of our, of our student body just because over the school year, we don't, do go through a lot of surveys, such as the Panorama Survey, the Eastern Illinois Survey on Student Behavior and Positive Reinforcement, the Youth Behavior Health Survey, and the Mass General Survey on Substance Abuse. So because of having like a variety of surveys throughout the year, our students have developed survey fatigue. So they don't really want to go through all the surveys. So a lot of times during advisory, what happens is that instead of actually thinking about the answers, a lot of students just go down the row and just like hit the same answer over and over again, just to get the survey done. So for that reason, we're not really sure if the survey data is accurate.
That being said, when you look at individual survey data, which I have, and you look at certain individuals where you think they might be a lower on the scale around self-efficacy or self-esteem, some of the things that I see anecdotally actually mirror what they report. So we are worried about how engaged students are and when they're participating in the survey, because that's a question in our, in the advisory that Mrs. Grady and I have around, okay, we got to take this seriously, we need to answer this. And again, we have grade twelve students, so it is, again, this challenge of getting them to complete the survey and be serious about it. And they just want to move on quickly. So, I do think there's survey, a little bit of survey fatigue, and Riddy said that. The other piece is that we ask students for feedback pretty regularly around classroom instruction. And particularly at the end of the semester, we run surveys of how it's going, so student teachers can make adjustments as well. So sometimes I don't, I wonder, and I'm curious, like, how much feedback is too much feedback? So I'm not sure the implication of, but we are, we are thinking about that as we administer Panorama and look at the results from Panorama. Like I said, some absolutely mirror what we see, and some seem out of sorts too. So some are kind of outliers. I think this is me. So, yeah, so taking a look at the Fall of Twenty-three Panorama data, which we've done, sharing that with student support team and our school counseling department to kind of take, get a better glimpse of what's happening with students' lives. And some of the stuff can be alerts to the counselors on what they could potentially work with, on how they develop better resiliency or what have you with students, or how we build self-esteem or emotional regulation. And some, some are just like confirming what they already know about students. We have also had a bunch of systems in place to have regular check-ins with stu, with students and a lot of different kind of regulation, resources to help guide students. But again, I think the last bullet here is having student, school counselors review the data and then meet with individual students as need to help shore up what we see as potential issues. The goal is to reduce the number of students reporting less favorably in the red or yellow warning on the Panorama SEL competencies by ten percent by the end of the school year.
We also went over the optimization of resources, where our priority is to strategically and equitably allocate district resources, like remedy overcrowded.
So as you know, we entered into the Massachusetts School Building Authority Pipeline for expansion. However, we did not qualify for the next stages. So you want to continue to work on resubmitting that, that expansion proposal to the MSBA. We are pretty overcrowded. We did add a fourth lunch to our school that allows to calm down lunches a little bit more and allow like students to get their lunches and come out a little bit more smoothly. And then in terms of the hallways, the math hallway and the main hallway in front of the main stairwell are pretty crowded. We are able to get to class in time around the five-minute, the five-minute transition period that we have, but the, the hallways are definitely overcrowded. And then also from the teacher perspective, we found that teachers don't really have a home base when they're in school. So if they have to, for example, our science teachers, if they have to set up a lab, they don't really have the opportunity of taking their prep time to be able to set up the lab, but they're actually setting up the lab during the class time. So it, so teachers not having that home base is definitely something that we could work on.
Yeah, lots, we, and this is class size reports, stuff from earlier this fall. A lot of teachers traveling. Mostly we try and keep teachers on the same floor, but we do have teachers that have to travel between floors and between wings, which is it's not ideal by any, by any stretch, but it's, it's working, but it's not ideal. So. And that's one of the, the things that came up with our, with our staff at the, not only staff, but staff on school council. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Eric?
I have the pleasure of serving as a parent representative on the, the high school school council, so I've had a front-row seat to the, the process. I think the one comment that I want to make is how helpful it is to have the student voices on the school council with us. Riddy and Mariana have done a great job and to get the direct feedback from the students, like in real time as we're discussing these issues, trying to prioritize is so helpful. I've served on other stu, school councils in the past and students haven't been participants. And it's so, it just makes a huge difference. So, and I'd like to thank you guys. You both did a wonderful job presenting tonight. I also, I think how we came up with this plan and how the, the team worked together is just very, I think, did a very nice job of really capturing a lot of the good work that's going on at Shrewsbury High School. There's a lot there in this plan, that's, things that are already in place and that are, you know, going through the pipeline. So, and I think it was just a very, a very collaborative experience. And I'd like to thank all the teachers and faculty, the faculty that were involved in the other parents too, because everyone brought a lot of interesting perspectives to the, to the process.
Yeah, I want to thank, thank you too for joining us this evening. It's always helpful, clearly it was helpful to the whole process to have you engage. It's helpful for us to always hear from, from students, so I, I really appreciate and love that. And a couple sort of small questions that bounced through, through a few things. You covered a lot and you have a lot of goals. And so it's ambitious and I really appreciate it. I personally have spoken and will continue to speak about the crowding at the high school and recognize that. So I, I almost feel like I mean redundant, but I appreciate it and I think it's important and I think we need to say it. So thank, so thank you very much noted. The two questions I had, and Mr. Bizzuto, one, one maybe, maybe both are for you, I don't know. The, the new teacher project, which, am I getting the name right? Is a, seems to be focused on sort of the more social sciences, ELA and, and social sciences. Is there a component of that or are our partnership with, you mentioned Wallfam, are others looking at the same sort of questions around tasks in other areas, either in science or math, or is that sort of a dedicated, is that the place we're beginning to go to later? What's, what are your thoughts there?
Right, so last year we worked with TNTP, Mathematics Department at the high school.
Thank you.
We took a look, looked at that and we expanded it. And I think Mrs. Clowder could probably talk about the other work she's doing at other levels with TNTP. But certainly, the idea is to get the protocol in place, look particularly at instruction, because I think when you look at the observation tool and protocol, like I said, we have, we have strength in culture and climate in classrooms. We have strength in access to high-quality materials. Some of the challenges where I think where we can actually improve student learning is around those high-quality questions and tasks. Not that we don't have those, but we can always improve upon that. And then student ownership. When we have students doing most of the work, like how do we get students, the question is, how do we get students to own the work and be a participant in that work and not have the teacher lead everything? So those high-quality questions scaffold and sequence in the right way. And I always say creating a safety, an environment of safety within a classroom where we might do a triad, a question is posed. We might have a conversation for two or three minutes. Then we might do some cold calling or some structured calling on student groups of what they talked about in their small group will help get us to the end goal of what that would look like. So those are things we're really looking for. We definitely have seen in classroom, in classrooms, in both English and the social sciences, some really, really good, high-quality questions. The question that we have is like, how do we improve the frequency of that in every classroom? And how do we coach people up on to do that with, with the most frequent and regular basis? And be able to collaborate, because when we collaborate with each other, that stuff just really grows exponentially. So yesterday's Professional Development Day, for part of that, Mrs. Trombley, who's our English Director, and Mrs. Jen D. Frantescu, who's our Social Science Director, spent a good portion of their PD time working on this project with their collaborative teams. And it's a really thought exercise too, and it's a different way of thinking around instruction, but they're really laser-focused on this. I think we can expand that. The goal is to kind of replicate this as we move forward by grade level, but we need to start somewhere. So we thought foundationally, start at grade nine, similar experience. They're kind of like, those two department directors work really well together. Mrs. Clowder and our consultants have been fantastic. So, Megan DeLeon, Alicia Harrigan from the Special Education Department are involved. Looking at scaffolding stuff to increase supports for special education students. There's like a ton of work going on with it. We have multiple meetings on it, but yeah, it's exciting for us because I think we're just going to see the benefit of that and, and improving learning and outcomes, quite frankly, and achievement. So that's, that's the end goal. Starting small.
Thank you. Well, it sounds like it's building on, upon prior work too, which is, which was maybe the piece I was missing. Can I ask one other? If I can pivot to the well-being and Panorama. We've anchored ourselves on Panorama as a, as a one of hundreds of things you could look at in terms of measurements. It feels like an important one to just kind of have, have some way to kind of be focused, and I'm saying this more for the students here, on well-being and not missing it, right? That people could talk about MCAS or AP enrollment, and then we don't want to miss wellness. And so, but the idea also that we use Panorama- And so, but the idea also that we use Panorama, it feels like for a few different things, because sort of like identifying kids who maybe have needs and doing some targeted intervention, but then also doing this broader pulse of how are all of the kids doing? And, and I just am wondering, in my professional sphere, we do things around like satisfaction, but you can't ask that too often, right? Because it just doesn't change quickly, right? It's like, it takes a long time to feel better and like you belong. And so I guess I'm just wondering aloud, is the, is, and Dr. is maybe even for, for you to chime in, too, is Panorama suggesting, and is our sort of methodology district-wide, that twice a year is sort of the best opportunity to get that broader feedback? Or, survey fatigue is real, not just among students, amongst all of, every time you buy something, someone wants a survey from you, like, what are you doing? Tell us about the gap, was it great? So I, I appreciate that, and I ignore a lot of them, because you have to, right? You have to protect your time. So I'm just wondering if that was a recommendation a couple times a year that we're doing across the whole district, or if in, in some ways, we want to do it once and we want to do it well, maybe makes more sense, and then we want to see progress in over a longer period of time?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly put in place that we definitely would do a sort of a fall and then an end of year to look at that change, right?
Sure.
And that we were measuring this, this, the effect hopefully of all the work we are doing and try to increase that sense of belonging. We actually recently had a conversation about adding one, some, there are some leaders in the district who feel like they want another formative check to see how kids are doing and not wait until the end of the year, and those are always the balancing points. If you do one in June, there's not a lot of time left to do anything about it. It's going to give you this sort of end of year sense of things. And so, you know, we're, we haven't finalized things yet, but we're actually looking at potentially another one in the sort of late winter, early spring period as well. But, you know, the feedback's important and thinking about ways, and certainly one thing what we plan on doing is reaching out to Panorama for some technical assistance around, you know, we're, we're looking at these, these statistics not only for our own students, but they're also a norm nationally. It's a tool that's used across the US in a variety of ways. And, you know, they, they kind of give you a big, you know, quarter, I guess, quintiles, I guess, eighty to, you know, say eighty to a hundred percent, or six, fifty-nine to seventy-nine percent, whatever it might be, where you compare, and you can also look at different types of schools, so we can compare ourselves to suburban schools of, you know, certain size, things of that nature, or socioeconomic. So we, it's been a useful tool that way, but it can only be useful if the students are doing it. Now, high school kids are high school kids across the country, too, so I'm imagining that some of that's built in to the stats about how one high school's students are approaching it versus in others. You know, certainly I know that, you know, we've talked, leadership teams talked about ways to try to encourage students to try to provide the best, most authentic feedback they can. One of the elements of it, of course, that's important is that, you know, there is a comment section, and, you know, comments, you know, when they're thoughtful, you can tell when, when students are making thoughtful comments about something that either, you know, you can see it's like, okay, we're hitting the mark here, and something we're doing is working, or, you know, some ouches around, you know, these are kids whose experiences are not what they want them to be. So how do we utilize that? But, and also the individual targeting, as you mentioned, to see. So, you know, it's a relatively new tool for us. I think it's a new way we're using it. We'll have to monitor to see if it's giving us what we want. And if, if it doesn't evolve in the way we'd like, we're going to have to pivot and figure out a different way to look at things. But right now, you know, for this year, we're committed to utilizing it. And right now, we're, we're in the process of planning to do a sort of mid-year, and then we're a little past mid-year, but kind of early spring, late winter, early spring, and then a one again at the end of the year, which some of the school improvement plan at the different levels is based on looking at how those, what change we see over time among that group.
I think it's great. I think it, look, reaching out to Panorama, clearly they provide, can provide a lot of expertise to us, you know, and I know in the, students are not employees, so comparison to employee surveys is not, is not exactly apt, but at the same time, lots of businesses have moved to a model of an annual sort of employee deeper dive and then shorter pulse checks that, that asks this, the same, you know, five or six questions that are really important for us to be kind of checking that temperature on. And so I'll be curious to hear how those conversations go. And I'm not in any way suggesting to change course for this year, but just as we move forward, and important to pay attention to the point about students being the same everywhere is a, is a good one, and I'm sure we're all tired of surveys, and yet they are an important way for us to get some really important information. So I want to just really appreciate, and in my time on the school committee, I think this is the, the most exciting opportunity to kind of dive into the, sort of a high school plan and how it ties to the whole district plan in a way that really feels cohesive. And while the issues are really different, we sat through the elementary schools, and then the middle schools, and now the high school, and we're kind of, we're hitting on all the, the big key points. So thank you very much for the time and effort you've put into this. That's a lot of early mornings as well, and I want to appreciate you for not sleeping in and going to more meetings in the morning.
I want to echo what everybody else said. Thank you to the three of you for presenting tonight, but also for working the whole school council. I had mentioned this to Dr. Sawyer, this was a very well-laid-out plan. As I was reading through, I could follow along with everything. There are so many people involved in this, and having the student voice is so, your voices add value to the conversation. So thank you for being a part of that. I am, I'm amazed at the course selection process, and I know that that's been changed up a little bit. I've yet to go through the high school selection process, although that is a couple short years away. But it is so well-thought-out and organized in setting students up for success and challenging them, giving them the confidence that yes, you can take a, a class, you don't have to take this one, you can go for something that's a little bit more challenging. And I'd be interested to see, working with the new teacher project and getting students to ask more difficult, challenging questions, and, and really not just listening to the information, but spitting back high-quality, like I've really digested everything, how that will change over the next few years on kids having that self-confidence to say, I do want to take a higher class, instead of being necessarily, I don't want to say pushed into a class, but instead of us saying, you can do it, them say, I can do it. So that's great. I just thank you for the work. This was a really good presentation.
Absolutely. I think the areas that you hit are really vital to what needs to be done or needs to be looked at and managed, because, you know, there's a lot of management that goes on over a large high school with a lot of students, and we're trying to add new experiences and different pathways, so that there's a lot that goes into that, but also making sure that everyone is getting what they need. And I think, you know, from my perspective, since Mr. Bizilow came to the high school, there's been a change in what students can take in those higher-level classes. It used to be more rigid, and now it's like having a student really try to do the best they can and stretch, and there's more ability to do that than there used to be, say, ten, fifteen years ago. So I think that's a really good thing, that we're still doing that and making sure students are stretching and doing the best they can, and having the supports while they do that. One question I had around the Blackstone Valley Hub, I know you mentioned 24 students to date, is there a set number we can send, or can we send more if they want to go?
Yeah, so the number typically is like, they can take eight, eight to 10. I think it's, I think we, we try to push 10 or 12, and they said eight's kind of the magic number. What we've done, the first two cohorts we ran in the fall, we ran two cohorts of two-week experiences or two-day, two full-day experience around the kind of manufacturing protocols, laser cutter, water jet, some CNC stuff, virtual reality augmented like welding, which was popular, so kind of dipping our toes in some of the kind of, kind of like manufacturing piece. So we did two cohorts in the fall, we met with BB Hub again, we thought we could get another day in, so now we're at cohort three, and they're actually going for three days. We'll look at cohort four again to get another group of students down to the, to the hub to try and, again, expand. Last week, they sent us a video of the, of the students who went, I should have played it, but they literally built these Bluetooth speakers, they cut something out using whatever they manufactured, and they put, you know, a chip board within the speaker, put speakers in, wired it to batteries, and then paired it with a phone, kind of cool, and they played a song, and we're dancing, it was kind of cool. But really, hands-on, authentic, experiential learning stuff for them. They came back really energized about what they did, and they loved it, and the people down at the hub loved it so much, they sent us the video of them dancing, because they took the video. So it was, just been a great experience overall for students. Again, the push for us is how do we, how do we look at subgroups, particularly females, right? And try and get them in some of those areas that they might not necessarily want to be investigate, so we have to do, I think we still have room for improvement there. But generally speaking, the hub has been a great, great partner. They've been super helpful with our, helping us and advising us around our grant writing, because they're connected with a number of different organizations, so, and they're just, just great people. So we'll look for cohort four coming up and see if we can get cohort five, but the Colonial Fund helps support the transportation down there.
Right.
And the funding for that, so it's been absolutely, just an absolute, for us, it's been really, really good for our students, so. I also, if I can just have, if you can indulge me, I want to thank the parents who are on the committee, Rishi Vora, Chrissy Manzi, Erin Boucher, who, who come at 7:00 AM with Mariana and Riddy, and Dr. Annie Duggan from our science department, Kim Fitzpatrick from our social science department, Liza Trombley, who's like, seems to be everywhere. She's also has students in the school, but she also is a teacher and director, so she's a different perspective for sure. But they just, we talked about the plan, the reality is, the plan that we put together here wouldn't happen without their feedback. They've just been absolutely great in terms of the conversations and their own learning about, you know, they had their own misconceptions, but actually helped unscramble some things and share their friends' perspectives of what they're seeing. So it's, it's been some really, really good conversations we've had, they've been early. And it's just, the meetings are early, but it's been really, really, I thought it's been a great group to work with. We're going to continue our work. We talked, had a heavy conversation at the last meeting about midterms, we'll table that for tonight, but the efficacy of midterms and why we have midterms, why we don't have midterms, what we can do about midterms, and students had one perspective, teachers and parents had different perspectives, it was, we left the room and everyone was okay, but there was some.
Strong feeling.
So, it's just a great group, so I just want to thank them for their dedication, because it's a volunteer thing, they ran for, had to run for election, we ran an election for it, they were the top vote-getters, so, in our community. So the people that voted for them, thank you, because you selected some really great people with really great perspectives, and for those that, the members of the committee, we couldn't ask for a better school council, for sure. So thank you.
I think about the high schools, as it's, we didn't get into the pipeline this past with the SOI, but having the students' voice on that is really important for us, because you're living it day-to-day, and it's not just the space, it's also that students are not able to access educational services, we don't have the space. So we're finding other ways to do it, but it's, that's an equity issue, too. We don't, not everybody can have the same experiences. So as we look forward, you know, having the students give us your experience is vital. And I think, you know, looking at this group, getting to, it's that collaboration with parents and students especially, because adults don't always know everything. We think we do, but we really need to have it from the students, because you're living it every day. So thank you to everybody who participated, and I do think this is probably one of the, the best ones for our school improvement plans that I've seen in my years on the committee. It just really hits those highlights at the school where there's a lot of students and a, but there's a lot of really good things going on and a lot of work behind that, so thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Kudos on a terrific plan. I want to thank Riddy and Mariana in particular for being student leaders, and this is an experience, I mean, I'm sure people watching are ready to hire you right now. We're not quite done with high school yet, but really outstanding work presenting and being a voice for your fellow students on this, on the school council, because this is important work. I want to thank Mr. Bizilow and the leadership team, Mr. Bizilow and Mrs. Clouder for their leadership in bringing the TNTP program forward to the high school leadership team, who are taking on the challenge around how do we, you know, find a smart way to get kids to challenge themselves, or maybe in some places where they could and they're not, and making sure that, you know, students who may not be coming from the same background in terms of knowledge, and, and, you know, a student who's parents, and they sit down and look at the course selection process, and, and who, both of their parents have been to, to college, and are going to say, here's some things that may make sense for you if this is the pathway you want to go, versus a student who's a first-generation student, whose parents maybe didn't go to college, or maybe don't speak English yet, and, you know, yet is very capable, and making sure that we're providing opportunities for all of our kids. You know, our entire strategic plan is focused on, you know, all students, and, and that's something that I'm really excited to see what happens. But I know it, it is hard work and a lot of detailed work that the counseling staff and, and our teachers are going to be doing to help think about how we can set our students up for success next year, but see if they, they, give them that message that we believe in them and we want to see them succeed and challenge themselves where that's, where that's appropriate. And, and really just overall, that, you know, it's, it's very hard work right now to be an educator, a paraprofessional, it is not easy to be a student. We didn't even talk about some of the issues relative to social media, artificial intelligence. There are a host of issues right now that young people, particularly teens, face. Some of them are being addressed by the things that are part of this plan. I think we have the right plan and with the right areas of focus, but, you know, what happens day-to-day at Shrewsbury High School is all that and more, and we have an unbelievably good team of people who are doing that work, supporting kids. We have wonderful students who are, who are working hard overall and, and trying to do their best and, and grow and learn, and we've got terrific families supporting them, so that, that's what would make Shrewsbury a special place. But as was mentioned earlier, it's our job to always work on how we can get better. You know, we're, and, you know, we want to build on the strength that we have and, and look and be very honest with ourselves about places where we can do better and try to, over time, not all at once, but over time, continue to build ourselves up so we can continue to improve. So thank you very much, and again, congratulations, and now we'd ask that you vote to approve the plan.
Thank you. My, I vote, I can't even talk. A motion that the committee vote to approve the 2023 through 2024 school improvement plan for Shrewsbury High School.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you again.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we are going to have Dr. Sawyer's initial budget recommendation for fiscal year 2025, and he will be joined by Mr. Girardi, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations.
So thank you, appreciate the opportunity this evening to share my recommendation for the fiscal year 2025, school department budget. Want to first start by thanking Mr. Girardi, who's done a tremendous amount of work to put this, all the documents together you received earlier today, this budget book, which is, let's see, sixty-seven pages that are densely populated of a variety of information, and it'll be posted on our website tomorrow, and we encourage everyone to take a look at it. And there's a, a lot of terrific data there about what we're trying to do, what we have done, and what we aim to do as far as our, our fiscal plan for the year ahead. Also want to thank Kim Fitzpatrick, who is Chris's right-hand when it comes to doing the, the budgeting work, and she is largely responsible for the contents of this book as well, especially making it all fit together and, and making sure that it, it, it contains everything that it needs to for the school committee and the select board and the finance committee and everyone else, ultimately town meeting, working through the budget. So appreciate Kim's work as much, very much as well. To set some context, we do have, you know, we're, you know, a really good news story. We have fiscal stability in the Shrewsbury Public Schools and in the town of Shrewsbury, and that is thanks to the decision that the voters made in 2021 to pass the historic operational override, which has provided us with sufficient resources and predictable resources. And I cannot emphasize again how important that has been to be able to focus on all the things we just talked about in the high school school improvement plan, and middle school and elementary school, and our strategic planning. We're not spending time, you know, lots and lots of hours every year trying to figure out what we're going to cut in order to meet other needs that we're required to, to provide, or that yo-yo from year to year where you weren't quite sure where you were going to be. That stability has been critical, and that's during a very, you know, in the post-COVID landscape, that's been particularly important. So the budget, we know based on that agreement, will be somewhere between 4.25% and 4.75% as far as the increase in the town appropriated school department budget that's ultimately approved by town meeting. And that amount of between four and a quarter and four and three-quarters percent really depends on available revenue based on Kevin Mizikar, the town manager's projections. The budget for next year that I'm recommending is for a little over $86.8 million. That's a 3.74 million dollar increase over the current fiscal year, and that's a 4.50% increase. And based on my conversation with Mr. Mizikar, that's the place right now. And based on my conversation with Mr. Mizikar, that's the place right now where we, we believe we need to be. You know, I think a little bit different, Mr. Mizikar, we're talking about this, the last, first couple of years after the override, things were very set right away. We were at the 4.75 number, this year's a little bit more fluid, and we're going to see how things evolve, of course, over the coming months. But I'm very pleased to say that with this 4.5% increase, based on a variety of other factors, we're able to maintain everything that we have and also make, you know, some needed investments in order to address some mandated services that we need to do, as well as some, some real key needs and priorities. So some key factors I wanted to make sure are included or mentioning as to frame this. We remain, and you know, those who, you heard, the school committee heard, and those who watched my state of the district presentation at the last meeting, we're in a very challenging environment, that's the reality in school districts across the nation. We are in post-pandemic, certainly places where there are learning gaps that we wish were not there, but they are, and we have to make sure we're working on closing them, certainly significant student mental and behavioral health needs that we continue to see. We have evolving student population needs, where the requirements of what students need to be successful are what we're mandated to provide under state law or federal law for students who are learning English, for students who have disabilities, that, you know, the enrollment and how that enrollment is evolving is going to make a difference in terms of what services we're required to provide. We have needs for updated texts and curriculum materials, and that's always a place where we used to necessarily be frugal by need. And it's taking time, you know, it's going to take years to get where we need to be relative to a cycle of replacing things. And you'll see later about some requests, but, you know, we have some things that we need to do, and we need the right materials and, and resources to do them. And then as you heard from the high school plan, and obviously it's been very much in the school committee's mind and, and your focus strategically, we need to make sure our students have access to career and technical education opportunities at the high school level with the, the change of students not really being able to access Assabett Valley Technical High School the way they did previously. Some other key factors I want to mention are technology needs. You know, certainly we all see in the news the situations that lots of organizations deal with, and public school districts are among them, relative to just more and more cybersecurity threats that threaten frankly the privacy of students and their families and our staff. Relative, there's a lot of data that we have relative to student records, relative to personnel records, that if, if we're not able, you know, we need to make sure that we're keeping that all as secure as possible. Additionally, there's just been an increased scope and reliance upon information technology systems, both for delivering education as well as operations, and, and that's something that is definitely something we need to respond to. The SR3 federal COVID grant funding expires in September. We'll continue to utilize the funding we have left and leverage that to the greatest extent we can in the first part of next fiscal year. But there's some things we had to make decisions about that we've been funding with those, those dollars the last couple of years to bring those into the appropriated budget. We have an emergency homeless shelter in town that's provided, the state's provided funding, significant funding for that. There's the question of continuity, we had our monthly call today with the state relative to the shelter. When I asked the question about kind of like looking forward to the future, they are very, very confident that this shelter is going to be open when we have, the next school year begins. And so, you know, what the turnover in families and students, that's harder to predict, but they are quite confident based on the need and what they see and the waitlist right now across the state, that that will continue to operate. The question is, will the funding we receive this year continue, and that's something we have to hedge against. And then finally, we are in the process, we've begun very collaborative negotiations with the paraprofessionals union, which is known as Unit D, it's our collective bargaining units, is known as Unit D, for a successor contract and, and how those negotiations go and will we ultimately get to an agreement. That will have an impact obviously on the budget, and that's, and that's an unknown factor right now in terms of how that will affect the next fiscal year.
All right, this budget summary sheet here is familiar to those of us who have been following the budget process, but for those tuning for the first time, it's busy and there's a lot of information here. So we're kind of working backwards here, this is the end product. This is where we're able to kind of house all of our appropriated budget categories, where we show growth from current FY24 to our proposed FY25 school budget. As Dr. Sawyer noted, the bottom line is a 4.5% increase, and the summary provides high level detail for each category. Our A category is our, is our, our staffing, our B category is transportation, our C category is tuitions, and our D category is our, excuse me, our.
Operations and services.
Thank you. So we'll go through each of these different categories to speak through where we are landing to get to our 4.5% increase in our total overall budget. Our budget book, which again is posted publicly on the website tomorrow, it provides a more detailed line-by-line item description for each of these categories. This pie chart is a little bit more palatable to see where our funding sources are coming from. This pie chart displays nicely how personnel-intensive the school department budget is, with eighty-six percent of our overall budget going to salaries and wages. And this pie chart here breaks down the personnel category further to show how the eighty-six percent is represented by our various personnel groups. Professional educators making up seventy-two percent of this category, paraprofessionals next with over thirteen percent, and then the remaining fifteen percent for each of the different personnel groups.
So as I mentioned earlier, the paraprofessional Unit D group right now is currently under negotiation. Our Unit A, which is our teachers, nurses, counselors, professional educators, are in the third year of a three-year contract next year. That has a two and a quarter percent increase on the salary scale, plus anyone who's eligible for an experienced step would receive that as well. Unit B, which is our assistant principals and athletic director, a small group, they negotiated a three percent salary increase and also steps for those who are eligible. And then our non-represented staff, which includes anything from secretarial and clerical, support staff, IT staff, administrators who are not part of the assistant principals' union, principals, central office administrators and so forth. Those are determined over the course of the budget process.
So what drives our staffing is our enrollment. Our pre-K to 12 enrollment is staying pretty steady post-pandemic, which is not the case for many of our neighbors in Massachusetts who are seeing some significant declines in, in their numbers. This graph shows that we've experienced big growth over the past thirty years, with the biggest spike during the last part of the nineties into early two thousands. We hit a high mark labeled in green here of six thousand two hundred and fifty-one students in 2019. Dipped a bit during COVID and have remained steady since with our projected number at five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five students for the 2425 school year. These numbers are from our yearly October 1st reporting period to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That's our, that's our bench point for our enrollment. Elementary projected class size. The variance in the last side shows an increase of twenty-eight students for 2025, 2425. It would be nice if these twenty-eight students were spread out evenly over the, over classes and levels, but that's not the case. We can often have bubbles in certain areas that can push class size higher than school committee guidelines. This class size projection shows that all elementary sections are running within or under guidelines, with the within guidelines in black presented and the under guidelines in green. This projection did require some moving of sections to meet guidelines, which is typical. For example, there was a bubble class at Patton in grade four this current year. That section will move to another school to offset class size for FY25. The budget recommendation tonight does add one elementary section, which is currently represented in kindergarten at Flore Street School. Middle school class size projections continue to be a good news story, where all sections are projecting within school committee guidelines. There are many of us who remember the days of the high twenties and low thirties, both at middle and some elementary levels. These numbers tonight are a result, as Dr. Sawyer was just sharing, of the 2021 override and ongoing security due to the agreement between school committee and the select board. I don't want to leave Shrewsbury High School out of these projections. They develop course offerings and a program of studies that don't lend to this type of projecting. I will say, and what's already been shared, is that we will continue through our enrollment projections to be overcrowded at the high school next year and into the future, which does impact what we can offer for courses. And finally, not in these slides, but in the budget book, we do have our preschools at Parker Road, Beal, and Little Colonials projecting around two hundred and forty-nine students went at full capacity. And we're also proud to share our first, this is our first budget book where we're representing rise, and, and they will expand to twenty-three students next school year. Vocational tuitions. This slide represents the number of students attending vocational and technical high schools over the past decade plus, with the significant decline in enrollment following the statewide change in admission policy beginning in 2122. You can see the dip from 2021 down to 2022 and, and subsequent years. We currently have forty-eight students attending a vocational technical high school, forty-seven of them at Assabett, one of them at Norfolk Agricultural High School. As this next round of 12th grade students graduate and we continue to not have students enrolled at grade nine, our numbers project to be twenty students for next school year, nineteen of them at Assabett and one at Norfolk. You can see in the budget line, this amounts to a decrease in tuition Shrewsbury pays from a little over a million dollars this year to a projected four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eighty-nine dollars in FY25. This is a difference of five hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
The next slide shows just our numbers in terms of out-of-district placements. Those numbers have moved, you know, lower from a pretty consistent, you know, seventies to low, upper sixties over the past couple of years, down to a low of fifty-three. In this current year, we're projecting about five more students next year. But the number of students doesn't tell the whole story when it comes to the budget, because it's the type of placement that they're in. As I'll refer to in a moment, the amount of, of tuition that we're expecting to pay for out-of-district placements right now is projected to be a little bit less than what it is this year. Some of that has to do with some students who are aging out of their placement when they turn age twenty-two, and the type of placements of, of the various students, but not the best information we have right now. This is a particularly volatile area of the budget, and it can change very quickly in terms of both, even with a small number of students, can change the budget numbers pretty significantly. So it's something that Meg Belcito and Meg Bartlett are continuously monitoring around what that might look like. And it's quite likely the numbers will change between now and when the budget is finalized in April and May. You know, the net change in the out-of-district budget that we're showing for next year has really two components. One is the fact that we're expecting, you know, some, the projections of current out-of-district tuition and what we're expecting to get in circuit breaker reimbursement next year, that's the second bullet on this slide, will ultimately end up with a net reduction of about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars. But part of, and then part of that calculation also has to do, or how much circuit breaker we can keep in that reserve, has to do with expecting right now that we're going to end this current fiscal year with at least a four hundred thousand dollar positive variance. Based on the projections that Mr. Girardi is making, we're confident that that will be the case. That number will fluctuate to some degree between now and the end of the fiscal year, but we're, we're confident that we can be at that level, and that will help us in terms of maintaining the kind of circuit breaker balance the school committee previously has been looking for the last year or so in what, what that might look like. So this is in the, as an addendum to my, the executive summary in the front of the budget book, but just to run through quickly, and people, you know, will be doing a more detailed presentation on special education budget in a subsequent meeting. But, you know, we started the year with a three point four million dollar balance, which is extremely healthy, that was maximal, we could carry forward into this current fiscal year. You know, we, we are also getting a reimbursement of about three point five million dollars from the state over the course of this year for costs from last year, it trails by one year, it's a one-year reimbursement. So of that total, what we carried forward and what we're receiving this year, our, our spending plan this year is to spend about one, four point two seven million of that, which would leave us at the end of June, when this current fiscal year closes, the target is two point six four million, two point six five million, which is about seventy-five percent, it is seventy-five percent, of the maximum we can carry forward, which is, which is seventy-five percent of that number of what we're going to reimburse this year. So if we begin next year with that number, and then we also, the four hundred thousand dollars in savings across the entire budget that we're, which is about, a little under one and a half of, about one and a half of one percent. That's a very small number percentage-wise, but it's substantial in, in other ways. If we can use this year, those savings to pay special education tuitions in the current fiscal year, instead of four hundred thousand dollars of circuit breaker dollars we had planned on using, we can preserve those dollars and move them forward to next year and have more in that, in that reserve. We're currently estimating that we'll get about three point eight three million dollars of reimbursement next year for this year's costs that are eligible. We won't know that number for certain until next fall, because we submit all those after the fiscal year closes in the summer. But Meg Belcito and Meg Bartlett and their team do an excellent job going through an exercise during the sort of February, March timeframe that helps us with the state really start to target. So that's an initial number, it's likely to change somewhat, but based on what we've seen in the past, that seems likely to be the range of what we receive. And the spending plan that you have in front of you this evening would utilize a little over four million of those dollars, and that would end then next fiscal year in June of 2025 with about two point eight seven million dollars. Again, that would represent seventy-five percent of what we're projecting would be the amount that would be allowed to be carried forward. This is a slide we utilized last year, and Mr. Collins, Mr. Girardi's predecessor, put together this to, to frame what we believe is sort of a range of levels of, of circuit breaker reserve that we think are, makes sense in, in terms of our fiscal plan. Although the circuit breaker funds are, are generated through special education and are spent on special, eligible special education costs, because of the nature of the way it works, we're able to use it as sort of our general reserve to protect us against anything that's happening that might cause us something unexpected during a fiscal year. So the maximum you can carry forward is a hundred percent of what you get. And you can see that's sort of played out in terms of this current year and then the next four years projected at what it would look like at a hundred or seventy-five, fifty or twenty-five percent. And then if you followed those for each row, what that looks like as a percentage of the overall appropriated budget. So this year's reserve represents about three point two percent. If we end with the plan that's on the table right now for the end of fiscal '25, that would be essentially the same amount, about three point three percent of the overall budget. And, you know, that's something we consider to be a strong reserve. And ultimately, as the process goes forward, the school committee will need to give us guidance as to where you want to be landing at the end of the next fiscal year, as far as the reserve we want to have on hand throughout fiscal year '25. I also want to mention the emergency homeless shelter funding. Right now, we've been receiving, we received a hundred thousand some odd dollars for the very end of last fiscal year for the students we served during the springtime last year. This year, we're going to, we're targeted to generate in the upper nine hundred thousand dollar range. Excuse me, from, from funding that we're getting is basically forty dollars per student per day, which gives the state average per pupil expenditure if they were here the entire year. We've received our first, we're due to receive our first payment of about three hundred and, it's three hundred and ten thousand dollars, but the, the state said they're going to round that, are going to move that up a little higher, because some of their numbers, they worked on their end, didn't capture everybody, so they're reworking that for a lot of districts across the state. But we're expecting about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from our first payment, they're doing it every trimester. And so, based on our spend rate now and our ability where we are this fiscal year, we have confirmed with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, these are reimbursement funds, they, they belong to us, and we are able to carry them forward in the next fiscal year. And part of the spending plan is to have at least four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of those grant funds, it's technically reimbursement funds, pushed forward into next year so we can utilize those for, you know, even whether the shelter exists or not, those are dollars we can use next fiscal year.
Okay, we'll shift over to transportation next. Transportation is a sizable piece of our overall budget at about four percent. And here is a broken down, you know, here it's broken down into two larger categories, regular education, which includes vocational, which includes our regular day transportation, vocational transportation, McKinney-Vento homeless transportation, foster care transportation, student activity, and athletic transportation. And then the second category is the special education transportation. So we'll start with the regular education transportation. The budgeted amount for FY '25 is just north of $3.4 million, which is an 8.74% increase, which includes the 6% increase for regular transportation, plus additional percentage increases to account for McKinney-Vento homeless and foster care transportation. And as you can see in the note below, it also includes the continuation of the late bus service that is currently funded through the federal SER III grant. This is $175,000 cost.
If I can just interject one thing, the breakout at the two lines at the bottom, those are part of the B1 category on top, but we're, you know, we're seeing significant cost increases because of the homeless shelter situation and because of the right that families have, if they are, they find permanent housing and they leave the shelter, they can continue to attend Shoesbury schools for the rest of the school year, and it's by law our responsibility to transport them and share that cost with the new district where they're living. And some families have chosen to do that, which, you know, it's terrific they want to stay with us, the idea creates stability for those students, but it does create additional cost. Same, foster care transportation operates under the same, similar type of methodology. The state is supposed to reimburse us for 100% of those costs. Those reimbursements actually go to the town's general fund. So depending on, these are numbers that are showing where we're at in terms of, you know, projecting budget increases for next year, but whatever we expend this year in those categories, if the legislature follows through and funds them at 100% as they should, or whatever percentage they fund them at, those dollars are going to flow to the town's bottom line next fiscal year, and that's something that, you know, certainly the town manager and I have had some conversations about. But it's, the good news is, the town should be made whole for those expenditures, and the question is how those dollars may or may not flow back into the school department or, you know, with the various other funding sources that we have.
And to give you a sense of what this transportation costs, you know, one van ride for, whether it be a student or a family, ranges from about $20,000 to $35,000, you know, per, per van for the, for the school year. So when we do have a student who, and it's, it's a great program where we can keep students in Shoesbury or keep them in their current district to provide some consistency for them, it does come at a pretty considerable cost. Okay. Our special education transportation, it's projecting at an 11.99% increase due to the volatility of the service providers that we are currently experiencing. Again, very similar story to the McKinney-Vento homeless and the foster care transportation. This year, our special education transportation provider did not come through with the level of service we required, so we had to go out and contract other providers at significant rates to transport our students to their programs. This percentage increase is what we're projecting in the actuals for the current year, so the 11.99% is what we're paying in the current year, extended out for the full year with an estimate of 8% increase, which is about the medium of the market rate. We are a partner of the Asabet Valley Collaborative. They are currently working to obtain a contract, a three-year contract, that will bring some stability to our out of district transportation costs with the hope that we can bring this number down some and only see some savings to the budget, but provide the quality of transportation that our students and families deserve. Some key points to transportation. FY '25 will be the second year of a five-year contract with AA Transportation for our regular education and some special education transportation with 6% annual increases in rates for a total 30% over five years. 6% does run higher than our 4.5 overall budget recommendation, but it is a fair rate given the current climate in transportation. FY '25 regular education transportation includes the addition of the late bus, as I shared earlier, that is currently grant funded, and it's $175,000 for the service. Programs that require out of district van use are projecting higher than historical market rate. Again, that speaks to the Asabet Valley Collaborative working to procure the three-year contract, but this initial budget projection is at 11.99% of an increase. And then transportation fee funds will again be used to moderate the FY '25 operating budget increase. The current fee offset for transportation for FY '25 is calculated to be $700,000 plus $181,461 to offset the cost of two of the 39 daily and district buses. All right. Our category D of the budget summary, again, refers to materials, equipment, contract services, and other resources that would be procured to run the school operation. Strategic increases in this category for FY '25 really are geared towards investments in curriculum materials, specifically in the areas of literacy and Shoesbury High School history, texts, and materials, and then critical IT hardware and software upgrades and purchases. As this is the category that lends more towards purchasing and procurement, most accounts are projected for a 3.75% to 4.25% increase to account for price inflation based upon FY '24 trends. This certainly is an area where we see efficiencies and cost savings where appropriate.
So I mentioned at the beginning that there are some needs that we have either for mandated services or key elements that we really need to address, and so these next couple of slides indicate what those investments would be for personnel. There's a halftime special education teaching position at Coolidge, we're actually adding that and the process adding that right now because of need, which we'll be able to, we'll have to carry this year, but we need to bake that into the budget for next year as well. We need an occupational therapist position, an additional one for the district just to meet demand for special education services. Similarly, a speech and language pathologist. We don't know where that position will be located, more than likely the high schools where we have the most pressure right now for individualized education plans for speech, and we just are going to need more capacity to be able to meet students' needs. Similarly, English language education, this current year, we've, we've added three positions that we're funding entirely out of the emergency homeless shelter funding. One of those positions, we're proposing bringing into the budget next year and keeping the other two intact, presuming we need both of them on that grant funding that I mentioned earlier. But we do have specific state mandated services we need to provide for students who are learning English, and that demographic, as you know, increased by 65% year over year. And less than half of that were students from the shelter. So we know that's a changing demographic we're going to have to keep working with here in Shoesbury. And we're wonderful families who, and students who, we have a terrific team and our English language educators who work with them, and we want to be sure that we have the capacity to provide what is expected of us and what we need to help those students learn English as rapidly as possible and be successful in our schools. We also have a position for a clinical coordinator. These are board-certified behavior analysts. We added a couple more in the budget about a year ago, and we believe, just based on the need we're seeing, that we should add another. You know, how they're exactly deployed across the district remains to be seen, but this is something to support students with significant behavioral health concerns, which we've spoken about. The kindergarten teacher at Floral Street School to address class size, that's the one position we need to add to keep class sizes within guidelines at the elementary K-4 level. The adjustment council position at the high school is a position that already exists, that's a position that has been funded the last couple of years through the SER III grant. We believe it's critical to keep that position on, we still have the need certainly, and we want to move that into the appropriated budget. And then another English language education position, Christina Manos, who is a superb director of the program. Just given the volume of demands and needs that we have to address as a district for, to meet all the DESI's requirements, we need more support to provide mandated language screenings, student assessments, overall support for the program, teacher supervision and evaluation. And so we have proposed a coordinator position that is akin to the middle school subject coordinators that we have, curriculum coordinators that we have now. This would be flexible to be, you know, at different places across the district, but we think it's an important position to add so we can have that program run as it should. We are recommending adding another meetings, reading specialist at the middle level. We are, we are, excuse me, added positions this year, one which is located at Sherwood. We know based on our data that we continue to see students at the middle school level at Sherwood and Oak both, who are not where they need to be in terms of their literacy and their reading progress in this, again, sort of post-pandemic environment. The intent is to, to add this at the middle level, likely focused initially next year in, in large part at Oak Middle School, perhaps across the schools, it's going to depend on what the data is looking like by the end of the school year and the start of next year, but ultimately would be, you know, a middle level position that could flex between those two schools next year. But we want to provide more support for literacy and learning, reading at, at the middle level. The next position, known as a career and technical education coordinator, as Dr. Lazard and Mr. Bizidlo and the team at the high school have looked at adding these innovation career pathways programs. School districts who have these kind of programs, almost universally have a position that helps coordinate the work, especially for the upperclassmen who are going out to do job shadowing, internships. There's a lot of partnering with businesses. You heard Mr. Bizidlo say that Dr. Lazard and Ms. Cohen have been doing a lot of that, but as it gets more intensive and more students who are involved, we're going to need capacity to do that. It's a 0% impact or a $0 impact on the appropriated budget. We do have some money that's in the budget this year to get for startup costs for the career technical education programs, to be using those funds to fund that position. Excuse me. Similarly, we're proposing a well-being coordinator that would not be any additional dollars to the budget, but would be using funding that we're right now using for contracted services for the mindfulness position that we have right now. We're looking to, you know, advance the key commitment around well-being of all and, you know, needing, having someone coordinate those well-being supports and both for students and for staff in order to relate, you know, to address stress management, emotional regulation, and so forth. So again, you know, these positions, and it's not lost on us, of course, that any additional FTE potentially creates an expense in the municipal budget for benefits, and that's something we want to always stay close with the town manager on, but we believe this is a position that would benefit the district. And for both the CTE coordinator and the well-being coordinator and these other positions, as we have subsequent budget presentations in the coming weeks and months, we will be able to provide more specifics about those, those sorts of things. I mentioned at the start of the presentation about technology and the demands we have. We are recommending a information technology project manager. The demands for what we're trying to do are really exceeding the capacity of what our staff is to do them, and that's something that, and it's a terrific IT department, they're outstanding, they're incredibly hardworking, and Mr. LaRue, the director of IT, will make a presentation that gives you more detail, but we have a variety of needs around managing a variety of projects that people want to see happen so that we can deliver educational and operational services the way we need to. And then I mentioned the threats around cybersecurity. It's become almost a constant situation that we have to respond to, so adding a second network manager position to help address those needs is also a recommendation. And then finally, the last piece of the personnel request is a, just a point two, full-time equivalent position for a Portuguese teacher to expand a position so that we can add a fourth year as we've rolled the Heritage Portuguese program up, it'll be at its fourth year of the program at the high school, so we can teach that additional class. So all told, that's 12.7 full-time equivalent positions, just under, just over $960,000. And then operationally, there are three key things that we believe we should do that would be different than what we're currently doing. The third item there, the late bus service, Mr. Girardi spoke to that already, we believe that's a key equitable service, or service that provides equitable access to after-school academic help, participation in co-curricular activities, and that's something that we, you know, we've seen the demand for that be significant, and we want to be able to continue that service. The other two are around text and curriculum materials. The larger number there is, you know, in our entire K-4, I'm sorry, K-6 program, where we are implementing a new literacy program fully next year, we're committed to this. That number originally was $500,000, thanks to Ms. Clouter, procuring a very significant grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. For half of that cost, the impact on our budget would be $250,000. And then we're also looking for an additional $60,000 to update textbooks and curriculum materials in our high school history courses, in World Civ, US History 1 and 2. Ms. DeFrancesca is working with Ms. Clouter and with her team on identifying, you know, what that money could do in terms of what they could advance next year in those different courses, but essentially those materials haven't been updated since 2009, and it's time we make sure that we have the right resources in place for those key courses at the high school. So briefly, Mr. Girardi will go through a couple of comparison slides, and then we'll wrap up and take any questions that the committee has.
All right. The few slides do provide some comparable data to the state and to some comparable districts, you know, to kind of show that handling the budget that we have is a responsibility, and there's a lot of attention placed to the dollars that we, we have afforded to us. This data shows a recent history of the per pupil expenditure, expenditure, which is a formula used by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to equate the cost of educating one student per year. In FY '22, which is the most recent data released by the Department of Education, Shoesbury spent $3,548 less per pupil than state average. That represents a total of $20.9 million less than the state average. Shoesbury also has comparison districts across the state that are called DART districts, which are determined by DESI each year based on similar district profiles. Again, the total per pupil cost for Shoesbury in FY '22, which does include the 11.36% override from that year, was $16,562. You can see that Shoesbury was the third lowest compared to the recent DART districts. And as a comparison, ClearGov does a similar exercise based on their formula for similar, similar socioeconomics between districts. This slide shows our comparable communities and per pupil expenditure. Again, Shoesbury remains in the lower range of our comp communities for ClearGov. All right. So our tuition and fees discussion for future school committee meetings. There are two types of fees that we will review. Programs that are co-funded by the town appropriated budget and fee revenues, preschool tuitions, transportation, athletics, and then programs that are 100% self-funded by fee revenue, so extended school care and music lessons. This initial budget assumes all tuitions and fees in category one above. The co-funded programs remain at current rates until further determined by school committee.
So in summary, I just want to mention that this is a process that's both evolving and fluid. We know that, you know, projected costs are going to change, that out of district transportation, new contracts, one example of that, that we're going to have to see what the impact of that is once it's set. Student enrollment and needs projections, as I mentioned, especially English learners, students with disabilities, what our kindergarten numbers look like, that's, those are always harder to predict. We're going to be, we're starting the process very soon, and we'll start to have, you know, firmer data about enrollment there. The contract negotiations with our paraprofessional union. Other, you've been accepting lots of grants recently. You know, we're always seeking alternative types of funding, and those, you know, if we are able to gain that, we're waiting, awaiting a grant, or you heard Mr. Bizidlo say, we're putting in for a sizable grant to support career technical education. We believe that we can do the innovation pathways either way, but if we get that grant, it may take some pressure off of other areas. And then, you know, we're always looking at potential efficiencies. There are some changes we'll make in some, in some personnel assignments that will be based on, similar to the elementary class size, where we move things around based on what the, the numbers are year to year. There, there will likely be places where certain positions might be shifted a bit rather than add one. We might be able to stop doing something one place and shift gears and move something somewhere else based on student enrollment, student needs. We're always looking for those efficiencies. We're always looking for those efficiencies. So going forward, in February and March, we'll have some specific budget presentations on specific categories. During March, we'll ask you to discuss and then ultimately vote on setting fees for next fiscal year. March 23rd is the date where we'll have the public hearing with the finance committee. And then we'll certainly provide updates as the different projections evolve, and we'll ask the school committee to vote approved, vote to approve a recommended budget to town meeting in April. And then on May 20th, the annual town meeting, we'll vote on the school department appropriation. And we appreciate your attention, and there's a lot of information there. We're happy to answer any questions or hear any comments the committee has at this point.
Thank you. Comments?
Like, thank you very much for the presentation. I'd like to reiterate our thanks to the community for the support of the override in 2021. It's given us the financial stability to be able to have predictable resources, and it's just, as you can tell, just so important to what we do. And I want to just appreciate, you know, your comment that this is a very fluid situation this year, that this is evolving, and these numbers and, you know, the things that we may be able to invest in may change over the next coming months as these numbers get more solid. But I am happy to see, and the things that you have brought forward to us, that we may be able to make some very targeted strategic investments to address some very critical needs that we have this year, especially with regard to technology. I'm very happy to see the network manager and the project manager positions being added. I think those are both extremely critical to address our infrastructure and something that everyone in the district relies on on a daily basis. I'm also very pleased to see some investments with regard to learning gaps. You know, the middle school reading specialist addition, I think that's, you know, based on some of the data that we've been seeing and some of the middle school improvement plan presentation and the MCAS scores and so forth. I think that would be a critical investment if we can make that to try to shore up some of the supports that we have at the middle school level in terms of literacy and to complement the investments that we were able to make last year. With regard to student mental and behavioral needs, I think the investment of a clinical coordinator to address these significant behavioral concerns that we're seeing is really critical, and I'm very hopeful that we would be able to make that investment. I think that's going to go, would go a long way to helping, you know, just address some of these needs that we're seeing that are kind of, you know, new and that we can bring some more resources to bear to help the situation. I'm also glad to see this, you know, to address some of the, these evolving population needs. You know, these are new to us, these, some of these changing demographics that we're seeing with regard to English language and, you know, to be able to add a coordinator position there to help alleviate some of the stress on the system would be huge. Additionally, that we'd be able to make some, you know, investments to replace some of the ESTR grants, you know, the money that's been, that will be going away in the end of, you know, September of 2024, to be able to, you know, to be able to keep the adjustment council at Shrewsbury High School. I think that would be critical, as well as to be able to keep the late bus. And then also, just to be able to address the career and technical, you know, to add some support there. And, you know, if we can do it, you know, it looks like with a, you know, a zero add to our budget, but I think that's a critical investment that we need to make. That's, that program is growing. We need more resources there to be able to help get that off the ground and to really give it a good start and to make sure these, you know, students can make good connections and, you know, create these opportunities for them in that area. So I'd just like to thank you very much. I think these are very good, you know, targeted investments, and I look forward to seeing how this process evolves over the coming months.
Lindsay.
Yeah. Certainly, I obviously appreciate all the time and effort and the many people who are not sitting there with you who helped get this to where it is. It takes an awful lot of team effort, I know, to get there. And for those who are turning in, tuning in now, you know, 4.5% and $86 million, those are not small numbers. And recognizing, as my colleagues do, that the taxpayers are to thank, by and large, one of the slides that's not in here that we've shown before is that the town and town revenues make up the vast majority of the, covering that expense and not, not state resources. And so it really is our local taxpayer. But I really see this process, even though we've been, we've been engaged in lots of conversations, as the beginning of work to do over the next, over the next few months. And while deciding, as Ms. Boucher just laid out, sort of like, are these investments the right one? A really important question. Or are we missing anything? Or are there any other new needs that are going to come up are important? And I hope that we'll get into some of those throughout the month of February when we talk about individual departments and what they need and do those. I think about a budget as a, you know, financially constrained statement of our values based on our priorities and our needs. Our priorities we've decided on, our needs are shifting on us in a lot of ways and in some critically important ones. So when I think about where we are right now and our work between February 7th and May town meeting, that I'm sure is in my calendar, and I don't remember what the date is, a few months here, that some of the risks that I think about, and you outlined some of them, Dr. Sawyer, certainly, I think there's a big question of, is exactly where in our conversations with both select board and the town manager is 4.5% where we're going to be? And the town's, town's position is also, as was mentioned, is fluid and is changing. I think about questions about, is the circuit breaker at the right level? And how do we decide that? And these are sort of important policy questions for us to be asking and to be wrestling with. While the shelter is probably going to stay open, will the funding stay there is a really big one? And that has been, you know, while there's some extra money there right now, there's been a significant strain on resources. We appreciate the state funding, and I'm not confident in that one at this moment as we, as we sit here. I think, will we end the year really with that budget variance? And there's some reasons to be optimistic, Dr. Sawyer, I agree with that. But we have not historically already committed our budget variance into the next year. We end the year with some budget variance, and we decide to spend those dollars on some curriculum or some other one-off cost. So we're making a choice to do that in this, in this budget. I think about whether the supplemental funding will actually come through. And again, I like optimism, but I want to, I want a little more certainty. And some of these things we're going to get tighter on as, over the next couple, couple of months, and we can feel, feel better. I'm quite concerned, honestly, about our special education transportation challenges and the fact that we've had to put more money and resources at it. Again, maybe that'll work itself out, and the new contract will be better, and maybe we'll come with a little, probably at a higher cost, but with a little more stability, which is important. And kids need to get to school, and that's, that's important. So I'm not saying those dollars don't need to be spent, but some of these risks to our budget make it hard for us to then decide in a constrained world, how are we making sure that we're really meeting our values as best as we can? And so I guess I'm, I see this, as I said, as the beginning of an important public conversation and dialogue with our other partners and town government, that all those upcoming budget hearings is a chance to ask the questions of our, I don't disagree with any of your comments, all of those things feel right. I'm concerned about, are there something else, something we're missing? Or how do they weigh, weigh against each other? How do we have our, you know, our conversation with the finance committee is a helpful sort of beacon about what is the community thinking? What questions are they having? And school budget and finance, and now this a few years, it feels like I'm just starting to kind of get it, is not straightforward. And, and, and take some time to communicate. And then, you know, I really hope we also hear from the public. It is, it is sad for me sometimes that our public hearings about our budget are not well-attended. And I wanted to start now saying it's, if we haven't moved the date, it's March 13th. And March 13th, want to hear from the public because there are choices and trade-offs, right? And we're doing our best to understand what the community wants, but there's nothing better. Just like hearing from the high school students tonight told us what's happening at the high school, hearing from our community members would, would be great. And we add into that, that sort of question of risks as we get further along in this process, we have to decide a question of fees, which is, mitigates risks to some degree, but at the, at the trade-off of, of parents and families. And so, so it's a lot of work to do before we get to May and what will hopefully seem like a nice, clear conclusion, and yet lots, lots, lots to manage through. So I really do appreciate, Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Girardi, all the effort to get us to this place, to kind of kick off lots of those important conversations. So I'm, I'm in a, I'm in a cautiously optimistic place that many of those things will trend in the right direction, and yet, yet I do feel fairly uncertain. And it's almost maybe, maybe analogous to your state of the district, right? There's a lot of good, and then we have to temper some of that with some, some real needs. So thank you, and, you know, I think we have some work to do as a, as a team.
Well, I don't, I don't know how to go after both of you because what you said was very important and what I was going to say. But one, thank you so much. This is obviously my first year going through this, so it's a very eye-opening experience to go through. I think that so much of what's in here, first of all, there were other things to consider. So this is a narrowed down. And those other things that didn't make this list does not mean that they're not important. But looking at what our priorities are for the year, I think this fits very nicely. But again, as Ms. Heffernan said, there is a little bit of, we have to look at the mandated services that we have to educate certain kids, and we don't know some of these costs. But I think that this is a good starting point. I feel comfortable that there's a lot of positions or a lot of needs on here that we do need them. These aren't fluffy positions. This isn't just a, oh, we'd like to have something extra. These are critical to just continuing education in Shrewsbury. So yes, this is the start of a bigger conversation, but I think this is a really good starting point moving forward.
And I think, you know, we've been in these conversations since the beginning of December, formally, with our budget workshops. We've met many times. We've had joint meeting with the select board. It's very collaborative, making sure that we're all kind of talking about this together, what the needs are, what the, what the available funding sources are. And school budgeting is so different than any other type of budgeting. And, you know, things that, not to repeat everybody else, but the circuit breaker, you know, we don't have a free cash account. So we have to make sure that we're really assessing that number and that percentage. And also, not having lost opportunity cost, if we could use a little more because there's some other need that we're identifying. So I agree, I think it's, this is a very good place to start. These are all data-driven as well. We're looking at our priorities, we're using data to drive where we need to go with our needs. And it's the starting point, and we're going to have to see how things flesh out over the rest of this period of time. But I agree with Ms. Heffernan, hearing from the public is huge, making sure that we, as elected, know what people want, not just what we are hearing or what we think is necessary. So a lot of work. And I also want to thank Dr. Sawyer for the appendix on the circuit breaker. I think that's a really good addition to this book. That's going to, because that's a kind of a confusing thing, and how do you use it? When do you use it? How do you keep, carry it over? It's just going to add more transparency to what we do with our budget and how money can be moved, but also has to be looked at very carefully. So thank you. It's a good start. I think we do have a lot of work to do going forward, but we're off to the races. So thank you.
If I could just add in conclusion that I want to thank Spinal and Mr. Girardi and Ms. Boucher, or Fitzpatrick, rather, for putting this together as far as the booklet and the technical pieces, but the entirety of the district leadership team. There were a lot of, I mean, many of the things that are being recommended were recommended through members of the leadership team. And there are a variety of things, as you alluded to, that are very worthy, that ultimately don't fit in this recommendation right now as far as I, you know, see it, based on feedback from the school committee leaders and my own perspective. But, you know, there are a variety of needs and things that, you know, we certainly could do if we had a less limited budget. The good news is, though, again, we're very stable. We're not talking about cuts. We're talking about, you know, make targeted investments and things that are needs or mandates without having to cut someplace else to do it. And so overall, a very good news story, yet not being able to do all the things that we'd like to do to try to really move our strategic priorities forward. And so we have to make hard choices about those things. So I look forward to the dialogue going forward and keeping you abreast of how things are shifting. And as you say, it's the start of a process that we'll culminate in May, hopefully with a successful vote at town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have our minutes from our meeting, school committee being held on January 24th, 2024. Any changes or corrections? Nope. So those can be marked as accepted as distributed. And we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific law or federal grant and aid requirements, purpose seven, Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, GL 30A, 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. The chair so declares, purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers' Association, and C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators, purpose two, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And we return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. We have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
No movement.
Second. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Shreveport.
Aye.
Ms. Boucher.
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan.
Aye.
myself. Aye. Thank you and good night.